Read the memo.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's the.
All right. I hope you turn on online here. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Scioto Township Planning Commission for January 22nd, 2024. Secretary Walsh, please call.
We'll call the Commissioners of the Scioto Township Planning Commission. Gatewood.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Olbertson.
Here.
Brockney.
Here.
Walsh, here. Hyde.
Here.
Riser.
Here.
Just to note, there's no one else present in the room.
All right. Thank you very much. We have four. And next we should actually, we don't have this on here, but we should move the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion about adopting the agenda as posted? All those in favor, please.
I have one. Is there an added item that Doug emailed us? Wasn't Doug, you mean?
Uh, Laura emailed us.
Maybe Laura. I just saw Doug's name on it. Maybe that was.
You know, communication.
Yes, it's just a community. Is that not an action item? Okay.
Yep. All right. So adopt the agenda as posted. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Was there a second?
Yes.
Right. The agenda is adopted as posted. Communications and correspondence.
Did you want me to talk about that communication, Jan?
Yes, please.
So, as you might recall, we had a discussion about the C3 zoning district a couple of different times. And we have a potential rezoning applicant that is interested in in rezoning their property from R1 to C3. But they are not in the sewer district. And so we had, Doug actually did some research on a previous application that we received in 2004 for a very similar circumstance. This was actually a property at the corner of Baker and Marshall Road that was zoned R1 and had an existing home on it. And that was requested to be rezoned office service. It's same as these other properties. It's planned to be a commercial or office industrial use. But it was not in the in the water or, I'm sorry, in the sewer district. And so what happened was they requested the rezoning. And then they actually received a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to build or to rezone and then eventually build a commercial business there without sewer, sewer service. So.
Talking about this, this earlier incident in 2004?
Yes. Yep. So precedent is that, and this would be the process that would be used if, if the property owners decided they wanted to move forward with a commercial rezoning. I sent this not only to you, the Planning Commission, I also sent it to Ms. Parker. And I sent it to those three property owners that are potentially interested in rezoning their property.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So are we, is this item on our agenda for discussion today, or we're just doing an overview? I read the memo.
Yeah, we just, we requested that Carlisle Workman provide a, provide guidance based on the request from Mr. Spicer. And so that is the that was a response to that request.
So I would just like to say something about this topic. This is, we have a more recent time where somebody applied the Ruth Johnson property. They wanted to rezone it from a R1 to a C3. We had extensive discussion about this back in August about the propriety. As a matter of fact, I was the one that brought up the point that C1, C2, C3, et cetera, all exempt these kind of developments where there isn't water and sewer, not just water, not just sewer, water and sewer. And it would be contrary to our ordinance. So I'm quite surprised that we're bringing this back. During that meeting, we denied the application by unanimous. It was six to one. And the reason is, I mean, I spoke about it during that meeting. I don't know why. Because one of the things that I was upset about was that this Ruth Johnson property was pitched to us, I felt, my opinion. Like there, there was no there was no requirement to get that C1 through C3 and all the other ones. And I was surprised that Mr. Luan had not, and I remember I even said that in the meeting, I was quite surprised that that was not identified in the memo. I recommend the. So I'll say it for the new members here. I objected to it because I don't believe that we should be doing things against our ordinances. If you want to change the ordinance, change the ordinance, but not making I think that's a bad precedent to set by deciding to make, to not follow the law in certain instances and following the law in other instances. The purpose of this, I believe, is to make sure that these kind of developments are on the Jackson Road corridor or in the water sewer district. The fact that a prior 2004 commission decided to make an exception does not persuade me.
It is our, but this, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure, sure.
It's the Zoning Board of Appeal. That is the appropriate entity.
That they'll have to go through.
That they have to go through.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought we were going to see this application.
No.
Okay, fine. I missed, I completely misread that.
Yeah, it goes to his only brother.
I mean, we had this problem before when we make exceptions for different people. And the public developers and property owners are not stupid. They looked this stuff up and they said, well, you did it for Johnny Joe. And it's got us into trouble. The sign, for instance, the sign ordinance, it's gotten us into trouble. So I, I misread that. I didn't understand. I thought that the process was going to be, that was going to become before us again.
It actually, it will. It will come before you again because the rezoning has to occur through the Planning Commission and the, and the Township Board. However, they also have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and they will make the determination whether or not it's possible to develop there without the sewer. So if, if the Zoning Board of Appeals makes that determination based on the practical difficulty and the unique circumstances of the property, then this would be a rezoning that would come back through the Planning Commission and ultimately the Township Board for adoption. So I just want to make that clear. You, you would see it again. It's not that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes this determination and it moves forward to the board. For the properties you haven't seen before, Mr. Kett's property and Mr. Spicer's property, they both have expressed interest in rezoning. Those would come before you. There's not a clear, if you read the memo, you know that there's not a clear, does it go to ZBA first or Planning Commission second? Or Planning.
Perhaps that's where I got mine.
Yeah. So we're not sure. There is no.
So I just want to say this again. We should not be going against our ordinance as a planning commission. This is our zoning ordinance. And I just think that's the wrong, first of all, I don't even know how we can legally do that. Now, the Zoning Board of Appeals is something different. They want to go and get that permission with the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's okay. But I don't believe that that's appropriate for us to be doing that as a commission. So.
That's the role of the zoning court.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde.
So as Kim was saying, as Commissioner Moore was saying, it should go through ZBA. If they, that's their, their job. And then if we, as a planning commission, see that repeatedly the appeal is approved for this type of thing, we should be then considering changing our ordinance to, to avoid having to have that avenue taken where it's appealed and then.
I know where you're coming from with that. I remember learning about that myself and the training that we went to. This is a little, this is a big issue here because we, I think that it's quite consistent across those commercial districts. And I believe the consistency is there to be able to make sure that that kind of development stays along the water sewer Jackson Road corridor. Now, if you're saying to me that if we got more people that want to start building out in the rural area and we want, we want more, and that's okay with you, I would not, as a matter of public policy for the township, I don't think that's a good idea, but I understand what you're saying.
No, it'd have to be in the master plan.
Well, we make up the master plan. I'm just saying the policy behind it doesn't, it's, it's smack dab contrary to what we, what we have followed for a long time. Now, I believe there have been some exceptions because I see the exceptions the longer I'm on the board and the commission. But anyway, I don't want to take up a lot of time.
Thank you. So noted. Thank you for the discussion. Anyone else have any communications or correspondence?
Yes, I ran into the Mr. Cohen, who is the homeowners association rep for Trailways. And he, he mentioned to me, he was curious about the next steps with respect to the issue about the Stabler Road and Park Road, the intersection and the culverts and whether it's Eagle's Call or we're, whether or not it's going to come back to us as a major revision to a PUD because they want to angle the road a little little or a lot depending on your property. You know what I mean? From an airplane, it looks little. If it's, if it's your backyard, it's a lot. So but kind of was asking about next steps with respect to Planning Commission reconsideration of a revision, you know, major or minor to the PUD and where we are on that. So I don't know. That's a question.
That would be a question to Laura. Yeah.
I could look at her.
Is that with the trailways? What, what property is it?
Trailwoods.
Trailwoods. I mean, there's Kirkway there, there's Arbor Point. I mean, there's, you know, the French ones.
It's my understanding with the neighbor.
Trailways, most closely.
Yeah, came to our meeting several months ago.
So he is.
Let me just say this rather. He pointed out that the PUD says that any amendments come back to the planning. Because at first I was thinking that's a road issue. That wouldn't come to us, but.
I think the developer has agreed that it's major. I, I, I think he, he was questioning the timing in the process.
So if I, if I may. Yes, we are aware that there is some reconfiguration of Stabler and the Stabler and Park intersection that is required through Eagle and the Road Commission. I've met with the developer a couple of different times on this. Actually, I spoke to Dave Stolman earlier today and he indicated it's coming back for the Planning Commission. It will be a major amendment. We have not received the application yet. I anticipate we'll receive it the beginning of February. So you'll be getting it probably in March because it, if, if it's a major amendment, then it requires a public hearing and it'll take 30 to 45 days to get it to you and have our reviews completed. But yes, we're aware that it's coming and there were four options that were provided. Two are not viable and two are, are viable. But it is, it will be considered a major amendment and come back through the Planning Commission and the board.
We just say options that are provided, provided by Eagle, provided by the developer, provided by the Road Commission.
Provided by the developer. And two were completely disregarded by Eagle. They were not, they were not feasible. So there were two options Eagle could live with. And last I, I knew, we requested that the developer speak to the neighbors that were most affected. And I believe that's Mr. Cohen and a couple of his neighbors. And I have not heard how that communication was finalized. But that, that was the, that was the direction they were given to do that prior to coming back for township approval.
Can I ask you a question, Laura?
Thank you.
Would, would that reconfiguration be paid by the developer?
Yeah, there's no township money in this. No. It would be paid by the developer, the Road Commission.
Ask a basic question. Who, who or what is Eagle?
The environment, Great Lakes, and
Energy.
Energy. It's what the.
DNR than the EQ now Eagle.
It changes his name every song.
Okay, thanks.
The state agency.
Right.
With jurisdiction over wetlands and streets and. All right. Any, any other correspondence? All right. The none, we will open a public comment. We do have three Zoom attendees and Rob Pattinson has raised a seat. Please go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. Laura, you can probably answer this question. When Dave Stolman was before the Planning Commission last summer, they talked about leaving Stabler as a straight road, not moving Stabler and having a long diagonal culvert underneath the intersection of Stabler and Park in order to facilitate moving the creek. And having just one culvert, it sounds like that wasn't one of the options that Eagle was willing to accept.
I, I have seen all four options. Rob, it's been a little bit of time. I don't really recall. So I'm not sure which of the two options we're going to see that the, that, that they felt the neighbors were most amenable to. I just know that there were different culvert lengths depending on the configuration and the, and the relocation. So I can't really directly answer your question, but they're, they're looking for the least the least modifications to make it, to make it work. If that makes sense.
Yep, makes perfect sense. Since you talked about the Cohen family being affected, that concerned me that they might be considering moving the road and putting that curve into Stabler that caused the uproar in the first place. And, and I'm not sure that would be a good solution. But we'll see when it comes before the board. Commissioner Moore, thank you very, very much for catching the correspondence issue. That was my initial reaction reading through that was, is this an end run around the denial last August of, of the Dan Johnson and Heritage Woods group that wanted to buy the Ruth Johnson parcel and wanted to make it C3? And that was denied. And this looked and felt like sort of an end run around that denial. So it could come before the, the board again. So thank you very, very much for catching that. You're always on your toes. Ryan and Jan, you are both best placed to answer this. Does the DDA have any short-term plans to extend the water and sewer district north of the highway at Baker Road there since that section is in the DDA?
Wow, I just, we see the fact that there was discussion. I believe the water means already.
What? They have water.
Water. The sewer, I, I have not heard anything from the DDA on that.
Oh, I, I did not realize that Baker Road had water, that it was only sewer that they didn't have.
That's correct. It has water.
Okay. So is there any other, and have you heard of any plans for extending the sewer?
I have not.
I think, and that would also be utilities and, and the trustees too.
And then lastly, thank you all for writing into the bylaws, the remote Zoom participation. I really appreciate that. For someone who can only attend from home, thank you very much for putting that into your bylaws. That's been an issue with other committees and having it in the bylaws here is is very resident friendly. So thank you very much for that. Have a good.
Thank you. Right. And we do have Kathleen Brandt.
Good evening. It's Kathleen Brandt, Scioto resident. There's one item on the agenda that I'd like consideration for. It's the solar, the solar option, discussion. And in there it says maps will be provided at this meeting. Those are not in the packet. So I would please ask that you display those on the screen so that we can follow along. Ideally, we'd like to see those in the packet so that we can follow the discussion as well as the maps. And then secondly, I want to tag on with what Commissioner Moore has said about not making exceptions and following our zoning. I will mention that exactly was done in the master plan for the Heritage Woods property. It was stated that that development came to the Planning Commission. The planner recommended that they hold that and that they provide feedback into the planning, the master plan process. And amazingly, it was added to the master plan as the gatewood, the Baker Road, Gatewood area. So that, that's a huge exception to the master plan, which I personally found objectionable. But this ties right into the Spicer and Kett property that those families were tremendously, are tremendously impacted by that specific change in the master plan that they fought desperately for a very long time. So I think they should avail themselves of any any, anything this township has done that they've given to another property owner. That same consideration should go for the Kett's and the Spicer's because they've been dealing with it for a long time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Camboy.
Thank you. Camboy, an active and informed Scioto resident. Two, two things. One, this conversations were quite late onto the agenda. Which rolls into my second point. In an effort for Scioto Township to be open and transparent, I'd like to see things on the agenda that is going to be, have any discussion to be put in, in a timely fashion. I'm also surprised that there is no name or address on this, this document that's been discussed regarding the zoning with, and no sewer. That really smacks of, okay, we're going to hide some of the aspects of this so that residents don't get upset. Let's just, let's, let's be honest. And so I, I find that as being disingenuous. Thank you.
Did you see the materials?
I, I.
I think that was close to the Doug Luan memo of January 12th.
I, I did, but I didn't see it until 10 minutes before the meeting.
Thank you. I, all three people attending by Zoom have participated in our public comment and there is no one else here. So I will entertain a motion to close the public comment.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Riser. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public comment is, is closed at seven. Yeah, maybe clock.
Seven, four.
Okay. All right, moving on. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. So we're moving on to new business and that's possible action bylaws and the script, would you like to kind of present the review of the bylaws?
Sure. There's just a number of kind of cleanup items that Jan and I had been talking about. It just seemed fitting that we hadn't updated these since it looks like, I think, 2009. I think in 2014 they were reviewed, but so just a few things. I'll just go over the items that we're thinking about revising. Section 2.1 term on page one. We just want to make sure that we note that we provide our members have staggered terms. And this particular year, in order to stagger those terms, there, those were, there were members that were appointed one year, two year and three year terms. And that a third of all Planning Commission members will expire each year so that we don't all come up at the same time for reappointment or new appointment. At the bottom of page one, Article Three Officers, we want to make sure that we, we will be electing officers at the first meeting after appointments have been made by the supervisor. Sometimes if we wait till July, that it sounds like they're going to try to make appointments at the same time every year. So that would make the most sense. Moving on to page two, under Article Four Divisions, Section 4.0 Public Committee.
I can, I can all, well, so the appointments are made by the supervisor but approved by the board. So it might give the impression that it's the supervisor who makes the appointments. And I guess he or she does, but it's kind of like a Supreme Court nominated by the Senate or, you know, nominated by the president, approved by the Senate. So, so after appointments have been, I don't know if we say appointments have been made and get rid of by the supervisor, or if we're going to say made by the supervisor, we might want to say and approved by the board or so it's a two-step process.
Yeah, I think I can add, and approved by the board. That's fine.
Either way.
I should have. Or just make, that's a question. We would like to have Mariah review these before.
No, I appreciate.
finalize them. So I'll make that note and ask her how she would, how she would prefer.
Yeah, I defer.
I'm surprised that's the only thing you wanted to point out about that. And that is that the board is in the midst of changing policy as you were kind enough to write up in your report. So whatever we do here may end up getting changed again for us.
Except we're not, we're not talking about the timing in here. This is broad enough.
We're going to wait.
Yeah, we're, we're, we just say when they happen, whenever, whenever they happen.
I'm a little confused how this is, the first change is going to stagger or make sure that we're only having one third of the seats come up. I mean, if I were to map it out, maybe I'd get it, but somebody is going to be.
It's got, it's not going to be perfect. You, you, we just want to have, and it's going to get a little while getting there because there's some one, there's two and three, but eventually we'll have one third of us. And I know that's one third of seven in a, in a real number. But, but it's to try to stagger so we have succession planning better.
We have to make a suggestion and then.
That's a state law, I think, too, by the way.
It is.
Okay. It is.
My suggestion would be that we stagger them for the first appointment this year. And then we have three-year terms. Did we do that already?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And then we have three-year terms the next time it comes up, whether they were one, two or three. And that way they are going to continue to be staggered without any overlap.
I think that's a great suggestion, but I also think we're doing that, aren't we, Laura?
We are. And I think if you read further, it already says in here that membership is for three years. So we're just making it clear that you're going to have staggered terms. And they're going to be one, two and three years right now because we're fixing it. But you, eventually it will all be staggered three-year terms.
Where does it say that? How did I miss that?
It's in there.
It's in there. It's two or three.
Maybe.
It's crossed off, but.
Yeah, it's crossed off.
But it, that, I mean, we could just not cross it off. I mean, it, that's, that's the typical term is three years.
Then you would want to say the initial fix would be one, two and three years. And after that, it will be. Otherwise, it's going to be very confusing.
Or just thereafter, the term of each.
Yeah, make it leave.
Thereafter, yeah. So.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
So Laura, while you're writing that, how will each member of the commission know their, where they stand in this initial one-year, two-year, three-year? Who do they, who do they talk to?
I've been appointed for a one-year term.
You, you would, Fran should have the list that tells you who was appointed to which one, two, or three-year term, and it will tell you your expiration.
I know I'm appointed for three years, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had.
And it's also on the website.
Yeah, it's on the website right here.
Public record on the website.
Yeah.
But I did not understand it was just the initial term. I thought a seat would be filled every year, another seat would be filled every, well, that wasn't set.
So to get to, to achieve the staggered terms, which makes total sense, and I think part of that is to make sure that we have.
Continuity.
Well, that we have people who have some experience, that we don't start out with a whole new commission, we don't have any experience on the commission. But say, let's say a person that's got one year, their term would be up next December. I know the board is looking at changing it to June, but let's just go with what it is now. It'd be up in December, and how do they turn into a three-year? They would be reappointed for three years? Yes.
Or reappointed for two and a half years if the board opts to go with a June renew date. Right?
To be determined, but that's how it.
It's really just meant to demonstrate that, that not, there's gonna be staggered terms, and they are gonna be for three years. Event, every term will be for three years, every appointment. But we had to fix, I think, I think during COVID, it just, I think they, I don't know that, I don't know what happened, but appointments got mixed up. So we're just making sure that we now are fixing it and we're having three-year staggered terms. On page two, we just.
Hold on, one, one second.
Sorry, Laura.
That's okay.
In the beginning of Article 3, it says at the first meeting after appointments, we need to put in something like annual appointments so that if someone leaves mid-year and there's an interim replacement.
Correct.
That can't be interpreted that we need to reelect.
Right.
I'm sorry, say that again.
That we put in the word after annual appointments made by the supervisor, approved by the board. That way, if someone wins the lottery and decides, hey, I'm gonna go live in Borabor. And resigns, that doesn't trigger someone coming in and saying by the bylaws, we have a new appointment, therefore we can trigger new elections.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's, that's handled.
I was gonna say expiring terms, you know, when reappointed.
That would, something along those lines.
So you see that sentence where it says all vacancies for unexpired terms shall be filled for the remainder of such term, you see that? It's like one, two, three, four, the fifth line down.
Which.
Or the fourth line down to the right, where it starts all vacancies.
Right.
In Article 3.
No, in Section 2.1.
Section 2.1, the time we're still. So you wanted to change that to?
No, I was down into Article 3, the first line.
For a sentence, at the first meeting after appointments, I believe you want to change it to after annual.
It's a different.
Resign, right, right.
Oh, oh, a vacancy appointment as opposed to annual appointment.
Yeah, that's kind, yeah, vacancy appointment.
Okay.
Time to perfect your secretary gig.
Are you ready to move on? Sorry, when you're not there, it's hard to know what's.
Yeah.
So the next Article 4 on page two, Decisions, under Section 4.0 Public Meetings. We just made sure that the Open Meetings Act, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and the Zoning Enabling Act were cited properly by their MCLs. Then moving on to page three, under Schedule Regular Meetings. We just changed a little bit of the verbiage to say the commission shall generally hold its regular meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of each month at the Sciouac Township Hall. However, the Planning Commission may provide for an alternative meeting schedule due to holidays and elections. Because we had to do that this year for our calendar. The meeting schedule will be provided by resolution each year and shall determine the time and place of meetings. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I do.
Go ahead.
I would suggest that on that last sentence that you read, the change, that it be the meeting schedule shall be provided by resolution, setting the date, time, and place, because I guess time and place, I guess, is that blue date? I guess it does. But I was thinking, instead of saying will, you've been very clear on saying shall.
What line are you looking at?
The very last blue line on the bottom of page three.
Oh, I see.
Meeting schedule shall be provided, and I don't care whether we say will, shall, must. Well.
Let's be consistent, we use shall before.
Will was used, or may was in the.
Show, may is the opposite of show.
Yep, and may was used in the previous change sentence, but I think it's appropriate there.
Yeah, may provides stability.
So we got a little softer there, we ought to come back to.
The meeting schedule shall be provided by resolution each year, shall determine, so we gotta clean that.
And shall.
And so.
Okay. And I know this sentence is a term of art, so the resolution is a vote by the Planning Commission?
Yes, but we have not approved it by resolution before. So we're gonna have to do that.
We approved the calendar.
We approved the calendar. But as a voice vote, not a resolution.
Not by resolution, yeah, not by resolution.
Oh, okay, all right, well.
Resolution has all the whereas's.
Oh.
There's a whole format to it.
Do, do we need it by resolution?
Well, that's the language that was in here.
Why don't we just say shall adopt?
That's fine.
That's great.
Because resolution is very, way too formal.
Thank you for bringing that up. And both of them would have the same impact.
Yeah.
It didn't say resolution.
Yeah. We certainly didn't do that.
Uh-oh. It's your invalid.
Okay.
We're, we made.
That went a lot.
So what's the word we're replacing it with?
Shall be adopted each year, is that what we're saying?
By adoption, yes.
Unless we're, and that's, this is why we're kind of doing this wordsmithing, and then it will get reviewed by Mariah and will come back to us.
All right, are we ready to move to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, page four, Section 6.1 at the top. We just added, in addition to the Open Meetings Act and the Zoning Enabling Act, that we will also have public notice as required in the Planning Enabling Act, so when we do a master plan, we'll, we'll use the Planning Enabling Act for a notification. And then in Section 6.2, there are provisions for change in schedule of regular meetings. What we never had before was the ability to, to cancel a meeting due to lack of agenda items. So we add, that was added. And then Sections 6.4 and 6.5 were both added. 6.4 Meeting Cancellation Procedures. Meetings canceled due to lack of agenda items or due to inclement weather will be posted accordingly on the township website in advance of the meeting. And then Section 6.5 Regarding Remote Meeting Procedures. Hybrid in-person and remote meetings will be held by the Planning Commission in accordance with township policy. However, if there is a technical error related to the remote meeting connection, the Planning Commission may meet in person and conduct all business to the extent possible in person. What do you guys think?
What is a remote meeting?
I'm meeting remotely right now.
Oh, okay, okay. And so what that's basically saying is that if there is a, an issue with the Zoom, we can hold the meeting in person.
So I would recommend that we use virtual. Remote meeting sounds like we're a clandestine meeting somewhere.
Um, Vegas.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, we do use the word virtual elsewhere. Under Section 8.2.
Yeah, so using that same terminology would make sense.
Yep. Okay, on, oh, we good?
Okay.
Yes.
On the top of page five, it's actually Section 8.0 Speaking Limitations. We just omitted that residents have to give their name and, and address. We took out address for the record. It's not required by the Open Meeting Act. And then.
The name is required?
The name is required, the address is not.
We're not consistent with doing that. I just think we're in the heat of our meetings, bro. I didn't know it was in the.
I mean, people can, can offer their address, but they're not required to state their address.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the names. I did not know that was part of the law, and I just was saying, we're not consistent in doing that. Sometimes we just forget. Or people just start bopping.
Although it is recorded in the minutes when we have public comment.
Even though they didn't put their name on the record?
Yeah, because it's typically picked up by the recording.
Even when they did not put their name on the record, well, how's it picked up by the recording?
If, they state their name.
Oh, so they do state, I'm saying many times, sometimes people don't state their names, we don't ask for it.
Okay, remind me if that happens.
I wouldn't, now that we're talking about that, I would like to point out that there's no change to another paragraph under Article 10 or Acts 2C. But there it states that the member of the public shall state his or her full name and address, and we didn't cross it off there.
So we should.
So we should.
Thank you. I didn't catch that one.
Good catch.
But we weren't there yet. I just jumped in. Where are we?
We're at 8.1.
Okay.
Yep, and so in, and so in 8.1, we just added, it's about exclusion. So a person shall not be excluded from a public meeting except for a breach of peace actually committed at the meeting, whether virtually or in person. So we just wanted to make it clear that even if you misbehave over Zoom or in person, that you can be excluded from the meeting. And then I noted on page six that we will remove the requirement for the address in the public hearing part.
Oh, wait, on page five?
Yeah.
Under the agenda, today you had us vote on adopting the agenda.
We need to put that in the, yes, the adoption of the agenda.
So under, after my call?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Through the, um, um.
Do you have more to go, or is that it?
That was, those are the only changes that we made unless you have others that you would like to comment on, have Mariah review.
Okay, I see, and we're not going to vote on this tonight. It needs to come back around after going through.
Our, our township attorney.
And it needs to be provided to each member of the commission in writing at least seven days prior to the meeting at which the amendment is intended to act upon. We can't get it in. We have to be provided according to.
I was gonna leave that alone, but. My bad.
So when we get.
Go hide.
We have to have it before we can advance, or we need to change that paragraph.
I think there's a reason that's in there. Just get it to us seven days before, please.
That's good. Yep. Yeah, I think that's important. And hopefully we can get it up on online at that point. Okay? Anything else from commissioners on the bylaws? All right, then I think, I think if you can take those additions and revisions, and we'll have it reviewed by the township attorney and brought back to us at least seven days before our next meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Hyde. And no, that's a good thing. I want to check that out.
Well, it probably won't be your next meeting because I'm not sure I have seven days to get, you know, by the time I get to the attorney, I don't know if I have seven days, so you will get it when I have seven days prior to a meeting to get it to you. How's that?
Sounds good. Just wanted to push. All righty. Then we'll go ahead, and our next new business is the solar ordinance. And this is sort of our, yeah, beginning discussion about this ordinance, and I just wanted to preface it with a couple of items. One, this is definitely a, we do not currently have any ordinance regarding solar. Whether it is, you know, right now it's being treated as an accessory use. We do not allow it as a primary use. This is also in response to, you know, why is, why is solar important? And it is, it's also a response to our resolution to achieve a community carbon neutrality by 2035. And if you, why is onsite solar important? If you look, there's, there are two different types of energy. One is source energy and, and site energy. And source energy is, is, that's the energy that our utility produces and then transmits. And if you look at the difference between how much energy it takes to, you know, a source energy to get those kilowatts and you distribute it to the site, it's much more efficient to have onsite renewable energy. So part of this is.
Site is the individual, or individual business, or.
Correct, so the closer that energy is to you, the less is lost over distribution lines, et cetera. And in fact, onsite energy uses, it might even be 2% of the total energy that's produced on the site, you know, with, you know, solar takes the inverters and so forth. There is a little portion of that, that's a part of the system. But it's so much less than getting it from the utility company, so.
Can I stop you there, Jan? I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So because of the the source energy model, as the, as the energy moves through, it loses.
There are losses in transmission.
Losses in value or?
No, because it's energy.
Okay, yeah, and then at, at the moment, do citizens that have their own solar in their yard that are that participate in the DTE program where they get credits and that? Is, does DTE use that to show that they're meeting the state requirements?
It has to be in addition to the renewable portfolio standard.
It's be in addition to what citizens contribute to. Okay, and then the third question I have is, do. Okay, and then the third question I have is, do, um, right now, and I think you may have answered this before, but right now, if you're a citizen and you want to put solar in your yard, do you have to, you have to apply for an accessible accessory use?
If it is ground mounted, if it's roof mounted, it isn't an accessory.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Both of those require zoning compliance approval through the township. Um, and, and so even a roof, even roof mounted does because they require building permits. And because we use Wasna County Building Department, they first have to get a zoning compliance application at the township before they can apply for their building permits. So, um, I review all of them actually through zoning compliance. So I'll see all the roof, um, mounted and any ground array come through for zoning compliance.
So they don't have to get approval for accessory use, but we have to get approval for permit?
Yep.
And that's not with the county where you would normally get them both?
It's both. It's both. It's because we don't have a building department. So we, we, um, the building department will not approve anything, any building permit without the township's approval. So we do that through zoning compliance. Yep.
So they would come to the township first?
Yes.
Yeah. And just to give you an idea of scale, and these are in KBTUs per square foot, which is a little different unit than kilowatt hours, but you get the ratio. So our township hall, um, uses about seventy-three KBTUs per square foot in site. You know, that's what we use on the site. If you take into account the, uh, the distribution losses and the generation losses, it's a hundred and twenty point nine KBTUs per square foot. So.
A hundred and twenty-nine?
A hundred and twenty point nine, so about a hundred and twenty-one versus seventy-three KBTUs per square foot.
We use seventy-three, but it takes a hundred.
To get it, those seventy-three here. Yeah, yeah. So that's the importance of promoting onsite renewable energy. It's just very, very efficient. So I just, I just wanted to kind of put that out there, uh, because as we're, you know, talking about, um, you know, the, um, climate emergency and some of our, um, environmental sustainability pieces. Um, it's not only allowing it, but the discussion is, do we want to actually promote it and what are the, some of the things that we could do to promote, um, onsite renewable?
Yeah, right now I have two five gallon containers with gas in case this, this freezing rain turns into freezing limbs. Cutting the, you know, so like you have power, but, um, I was going to ask you, you know, in terms of our policy, are you looking at, and certainly sustainability issues, but because we're about to embark on something different than that. In other words, I'm saying, oh, apologize. Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at creating an ordinance. The state's already into the mega watts, et cetera, et cetera, um, with commercial businesses. But um, is it your belief that, um, we should be looking at a more residential slash individual commercial approach?
Let's put it this way, we need, we need both. I mean, it is, it would be, um, I, I, I tried to run the numbers when we were doing, um, it, it, we don't have, because DTE won't do it other than by zip code to quantify how much energy any particular area is. But it would be very difficult for us to just with rooftop solar, um, to actually produce all the energy that we needed. Uh, it, it is, it isn't.
Without the batteries.
Yeah, and you need, and for resilience, you need the batteries. But that works. And the folks in, that have been using their batteries and so forth, because even when it's cloudy, you're generating some. You know, they manage, it's not like you can, you know, run everything in your house, but you can, you know, you can manage it. And also, what is very interesting is the car batteries um, that they're making that can go both ways. Um, a car battery, actually the, you know, the lightnings can, um, produce enough power also for your, your home.
What do you mean go both ways?
Output as well as.
Bidirectional.
Bidirectional? So let's say you had a Ford Lightning, okay? You would be able to power your house and an outage from your car. And you can't go anywhere. You don't.
That was what I was saying. That doesn't sound like a smart play.
But you, remember, you always get, you always are getting some energy, even when it's cloudy and it's crappy. Um, with the.
The battery storage is really expensive. We had the system put in last year, uh, beginning of the year, and the battery for the size of our system was more than the installation cost of the system. This is where the EVs come in because as you're going, rather than giving the energy back to DTE, you can charge your EV. And then should power go down, your system goes down, but your EV is essentially your battery storage. And you can use that before you get your two five gallon jugs to fill your generator and keep yourself going.
So I don't want to ask you about what you spent, but my understanding is that the batteries have been coming down. Like generally a household battery, a good household battery would be about three grand.
For the size of ours, when we did this last year, we were told it was going to be somewhere above thirty thousand.
Oh, well, that's much bigger. It, it, the batteries are in the tens of thousands, but a generator right now, a household generator is about twelve thousand. So, you know, it, it.
Can be more.
And the battery prices are coming, and yes, they are coming down.
So I was.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Laura, isn't the state doing something with respect to solar legislation? And, and aren't they going to kind of take it over and preempt local control? I- isn't there some push and pull right now going on with respect to what municipalities are going to be able to do and what the state is going to mandate, uh, or prohibit or allow?
Yes, so this, this, the current state legislation would regulate fifty megawatt and larger. And so that would be considered, well, we're talking about, um, if you read through the materials, as a large principal facility. And that would be regulated by the state and they have, they have specific setbacks, um, um, from nearest dwellings, um, specific fencing, maximum height, um, and then a noise allowance. Uh, but that, but for smaller scale principal use, um, less than fifty megawatt, um, we, the lo, the local community could regulate. And so, you know, I think that's, that's one of the things we need to talk about is if, if, to allow smaller um, than fifty megawatt here in Siyo Township, what do those regulations look like? Um, I know I spoke about potentially to have some maps. The maps were not completed, so they, they weren't in the packet. They, I don't have them tonight, but the next time we talk about this, we will. Um, I know that, I, I just figured from the amount of information that I provided you, that this would be, uh, just an initial discussion. And from here, it's going to take probably a couple discussions to kind of modify and work up, um, some language even to get started on this ordinance. There's just so much to consider and so much to think about. Um.
And I wanted to thank you for the materials that you did provide.
Yeah.
Helped me get a little more grounded.
Sure. So it, as part of those maps, what I, what I'd like to look at in future conversation is, um, when Jan and I spoke about, about how to kind of approach this, we talked about, um, you know, and I kind of broke it up in my memo in this fashion as an accessory use, right? What, you know, what are, what are residences going to want? Um, i- if a lot of them are going to want rough, um, structures, but if your roof's ten years old and you don't, it's not, it's not new enough to put a, um, roof mounted solar on because you're going to need a new roof before the life of the solar panels. Um, and you want to do a solar array. Um, right now you'd have to meet all of the setbacks of the current zoning district. Uh, do you think, you know, the, I think we're looking at big picture. Do you think that that's restrictive? Um, would you want to see something, um, like a rear yard reduction to allow solar arrays to be a little bit closer to a rear yard? Uh, it, these are just meant to be, um, things to think about, I think initially, think, you know, just to kind of get you started thinking about, um, if we, if we add regulations, what makes sense, um, what would be helpful, um, to the person that wants the solar? But also think about as a neighbor, how would you feel if someone was allowed to put a fifteen foot solar array ten feet closer to the rear lot line, um, or into the side setback, um, as a neighbor, how would that make you feel? So I think, you know, these, really this discussion is kind of just meant to be thought provoking. And, uh, you know, I'd like to take these, I'd like to start at the accessory structures and kind of talk through that a little bit and take a little bit of time. And we'll, we'll just get through, um, each of these, uh, as we go. And if we don't have time to get to them all, that's okay. Um, because actually by the time we get to the battery storage systems, I have someone at our company, um, that's much more versed in that than I am. Um, I have done a lot of, um, solar ordinances for other communities. I've reviewed large, large solar facilities for other communities. Um, so I'm really comfortable with, um, the solar part, but I'm not as well versed in the battery part. So I think, I think there's a lot to talk about and, um, I think so we can direct our, our energy to, um, kind of get some feedback where we can get started. I'd like to start just talking about the accessory, accessory structures for now. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Go.
I can't, I can't see any of you, so.
See how we're, we're, we, we need you here.
I, well, if it wasn't freezing rain and I haven't been sick for ten days, I'd be there, but no, not today.
I just tested negative for COVID yesterday, so.
Good.
Why I'm here.
Was that an unusual thing for you recently? Did you test positive?
I did test positive and then I just tested negative, so.
Jan, there's a button for the camera and it just drops occasionally. Um, John Riser might be able to help you with that too, or maybe Ryan.
John can't get any more.
Oh boy, now we lost both of you.
What did we lose?
Laura is no longer on camera and the township hall, oh, there she is.
You figured out your mute, unmute button worked, Rob.
Yeah, I didn't. I never muted him again.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt your meeting, so I raised my hand and told you there was a problem. There's no way to do that.
This is my view of the gallery. Did that change anything, Rob?
No, it's, you still, I don't know, just, can you just turn the camera on? Just stop video and then start video?
It was side by side and now it's just up to you.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, maybe it did. Does it do that?
Sometimes it just does, it stops for no reason. I don't know why.
So Laura, let me ask you thi- this question.
Sure.
Ryan, uh, specifically in other communities, I know from talking to people with windmills that there's issues with, uh, like the noise. Is there issues with shadows from things, solar panels standing in people's yards and some neighbors being upset about that?
I've, I've had no complaints about, um, any solar array, um, inside that I'm aware of in Siyo Township. Um, typically, those, those types of structures are around fifteen feet tall at full tilt, um, if they're movable. Um, so I just am concerned, you know, we allow decks to be ten feet into a rear yard. Um, but decks are, you know, a grade level, um, you know, they're, they, they're not six feet tall, they're not ten feet tall, they're not fifteen feet tall. So, um, if we, if we allow, um, you know, a raise to be closer, that means it's ac, as an actual structure that would be closer to that property line. So it's just something I want you to think about. Um, with regard to side yard setbacks, we don't allow, um, um, decks to be in, uh, side yard setback. And in some of our planned unit developments and some of our, um, um, closer, uh, smaller lot, uh, developments, they have five or seven and a half foot setbacks on one side. And so though, in those cases, I don't know that we'd want to allow a reduction in a side setback either. Um, but I think it's something we should think about and look into if we want to make it, um, you, you know, some, this conducive to, to everyone.
Turn on the video again?
Uh, really?
I have a comment on it, Laura. Uh, and well, it's for the rest of the commission and I don't know what other people think of this, but, um, decks are different than solar arrays, obviously. Decks encourage people sitting outdoors next to their neighbors and they encourage communication and people joining together. And a large solar array that sticks out next to my deck isn't going to make me get together with my neighbor.
It, it, it's more of a, it has more height.
Well, not only that, but it's not person oriented. I mean, it's not, so I personally wouldn't want to see us, um, coming closer to get, you know, putting something closer to my neighbor's yard that is, um, like a structure that.
It's almost like a fence.
It's more like, it's, it's like a fence, but it's more like a, a, a garage or a shed, or a shed. Right? So I would rather look at what we allow for those intrusions. You know, I mean, how close to, can they come to the property line?
Those are the, they have to be built within the setbacks, correct, Laura?
Yes, and that's how they're currently, yep, how they're currently reviewed.
I kind of look at.
Laura, do you have a PowerPoint?
No.
I'm just wondering what some of these look like. It's going to be a static object.
The fire station.
That's a big example.
Or, no, we're talking about residential.
Maybe not as long.
Is the one at the fire station, which I've seen, is that, would that be a typical residential one or a bigger than a residential?
Much longer. A residential one might be.
Thirty percent, forty percent?
Maybe a half.
Is there a couple of them along in our districts? People have them in their front yard.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, I, I'm, I would discourage, um, reducing the setback except on a site specific exemption. You know, if there was something that really wouldn't intrude on somebody because of the way the houses are situated, um, and perhaps you could come closer, but that would be.
That would be a ZBA kind of thing. And if it, if there isn't a, a, a practical difficulty, they don't grant it. So there would have to be some sort of.
Reason for it.
Yeah, you'd have to be able to put it.
Otherwise, put it in the spots that's allowed. But maybe you can't put one there and so.
You don't have any other options, right? But that, that could still be taken up by the ZBA, I guess.
Right.
Go, go ahead.
So I, I, I've been thinking about putting solar in, and one of the things that I don't want to do is put on the roof. So that I have to deal with changing my roof and all that stuff, and I wanted freestanding. But it, based on what you were saying a moment ago, uh, Bob, is that, um, so the, if they didn't meet the setbacks, that resident would be able to put it on their roofs. So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't be denied the ability to add solar to their energy options.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking, oh, uh, and this is, this is sort of like, is it, there are a lot of people who have, let's say your house is in shade. You know, you have tall trees, et cetera. You know, your lot is very much wooded and you're trying to figure out how to do renewable energy and there's a spot that you can do, but it encroaches in the setback or whatever. I mean, that could be a ZBA, but how, would there be something in the ordinance that would provide a little more leniency so it wouldn't be black and white for the ZBA? That, that, you know, is there, um, recognizing some sort of practical difficulties if there was screening or some other things? I, I don't know. I'm just asking the question that how, you know. I, I don't know. I'm just asking the question that how, you know, is there anything that we can do in our ordinance to be more friendly to uh people who do have um more restricted?
Is there?
Spots, so you don't have to cut down a slew of trees to put in solar.
There's the practicality of screening and I guess how the, how, how the panels would have to be oriented and also how screening would work with that. That would be something to think about, though.
Yeah, it's site spec- site specific, right? You know, that's.
That's what, yeah.
Compared to like the, the screening in the J-Rod district where like, for example, I have to screen my HVAC units where that's very doable because you just have to make sure you have enough access around the units. Whereas these have to be oriented.
Yeah, there's the orientation and yeah, and, and so forth. So I, um, I mean, that's my, you know, thinking about, you know, how do you make it maybe a little bit easier so it's not as black and white, this is an accessory structure, you know, you. Yeah, do you have any thoughts on that, Laura? I mean, is there anything that you could put in the ordinance that would at least give? Um, I don't know, some, because the ZBA looks at it pretty concretely, um.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Laura.
I, I was just going to say, you know, there are options, right? So there's roof and then there's the, the solar array. I, I'm not, I don't know the differential and cost or effectiveness or anything like that. But um typically, if, typically if one won't work, the other one does. And so I don't, I, by offering two different types um for residences, I don't know that there's ever been any one that we denied a solar array that wanted one. Um, I don't recall any, I think one came before the ZBA, but then decided to move the location and met the setback requirement um anyway. Um, so I don't, I don't, I guess, you're, you're right, it's really site specific and I don't know how we would write it to make it you know, to make it more. I mean, we're already providing the option of roof or um an accessory structure. And um, you know, every yard, every person has to decide how big of a yard they have and, and what size items can fill it up, right? Um, I don't know. I think it's a personal, it's a, just a personal preference.
It's a good example of how density isn't a good policy plan.
Well, you have to go on the roof.
Yeah, yeah, go on the roof.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know.
Or you can, you can build, or you can build a really nice shed and put it on the roof of the shed or the barn or the, you know, whatever. That happens too, right?
Or whatever, yeah. And do accessory structures have, they don't have any different height restrictions than the primary structure? So there wouldn't be any restrictions there.
No, but we might, if we allow standalone, um, I don't know, you might, i- if, if, I, I would think if you want it closer than the, than the setbacks, but it sounds like you, you don't, um, I would recommend having a maximum height of ten or fifteen feet. But um if you keep the setbacks that they have to meet the accessory, you know, the setbacks of the district, I don't know that you would need a hi- a height restriction.
Laura, a question for you, I think you said earlier that you've done several of these ordinances for other communities, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you have examples that you can provide to us of what those policies look like, just maybe for some more brainstorming purposes?
I can, um, probably the ma- majority of them are going to change with this new legislation, so.
Okay.
And how, how, how are they going to change from what to what?
Uh, well, the, a couple of them have decided to have really very restrictive um setbacks. And so, and they are large, so they would be state regulated and uh they wouldn't meet the state's.
Primary um, yeah, use.
Right, primary use, uh legislation is going to.
Yes, yeah. But accessory structures, they're, they're pretty much this, all the same, um, Ryan, I mean, most of them, most of them ha- they all have to meet the setbacks of the district, uh they're located in. Some of them, some c- communities do have a height restriction for accessory structures. We don't uh here in, here in Siouxsia Township. Um, I don't know any that require screening. I just know that that's very difficult, like you said, with the application of the solar and where, where they're getting the sun from, the shade, uh that any screening may or may not uh provide, you know? Um, so we haven't, we haven't seen a lot of screening requirements for solar, um at least adjacent to an array.
We want to be careful about the ten foot. I'm just thinking of this uh limit because if you're on the ground, if you have a structure that's on the ground, like some of them I've seen, like similar to the sheriffs, I think the ten foot wouldn't be a problem, but let's say you mount yours to be able to move during the day with the sun. Now it might be getting um a little bit higher.
Well, the ten feet was into the rear yard setback was a horizontal distance, not a vertical.
Oh, I thought you.
Oh, I thought it was vertical. No, so there isn't a, it, yeah, right now we don't have a height restriction. Well, we use, well, it's the, the same height. As a primary structure.
Oh, okay. So you weren't saying.
Oh, no, then it would be a problem.
Good, good. So, so Laura?
Yes.
Is the trend uh that you're seeing in municipalities to allow more of it or to kind of rein it in?
Um, well, in what respect? You mean for like principal use?
Well, principal use, well, I just, I guess I don't understand what a principal use is.
Solar farm.
Field farm. So a residential is never principal use?
No, it's an accessory use.
Okay, so like a solar farm, we're, so there's two things, solar farm and accessory use to, to help power your home, correct?
Right, so, so, and there's actually, there's actually three that we want to talk about and then the battery. So there's, there's four things here. This, there's this accessory use for a residential.
Right.
A person or a business, right? If they wanted to have an array.
No, I present, yep.
Yep, and then there's what we're going to call a small principal facility that we don't know what that really means, but it would be less than fifty megawatt.
Okay.
Because fifty megawatt is a large facility and that's what the state is going to um regulate. And so I think right now we're most concerned with, do, we allow them as accessory structures? They have to meet the setbacks of the district. Um, we don't have a specific height restriction. We don't allow them to go um into a rear or side yard. Um, so we can write an ordinance that allows them how we currently review and approve them right now for accessory structures. Unless, unless you want to be more restrictive or less restrictive.
So our, our proposed ordinance will likely have section one, accessory structures. Section two, small principal facilities, large principal facilities and battery storage systems. Is that generally the case?
Correct.
A- a- and uh, and then there are options abound in each, each, each division based on choices, correct?
Correct.
And what about, we have a lot of dense neighborhoods where the, they probably have homeowners association bylaws, condos association bylaws that prohibit. Like what does trail wins allow? What does, what does uh French country estates? What does the uplands allow? What is, what is the polo, what, you know, what, what about the subdivisions that are coming in? Are we saying that, you know, what if they, what if they say, we want to come in and not let our residents have solar? A- a- and they get to do that if they're a private association unless we say, oh, no, you can't come in unless you're going to allow solar. Have we thought about, about planning for solar in private, you know, in homeowners associations and panel associations?
We, we can do that in, as new developments come in. I don't know of any that prohibit them. Um, I know that there are some active HOAs, there are some inactive, there are some developments that don't have active HOAs. We do require HOA approval for a, for zoning compliance and we get that for, for a majority of them. Um, I, I, I don't know of any community in Siouxsia Township that expressly prohibits solar in their, I mean, I don't know, but I'm, I don't know of any. Um, and I've never, I've never had a problem um issuing a rough solar or an array uh with an HOA.
Whether it's roof monitor or ground monitor.
Correct. I don't know of any issue.
Okay.
So, however, oh, sorry, but I, to your point, I mean, could we in our zoning ordinance say that? Um, no, um, HOA or whatever could be more restrictive than this. So for instance, we don't restrict it in the front yard. That HOA could restrict it with their design guidelines or whatever, restrict it from being in a front yard. I mean, could the town, could that be a part of our zoning ordinance that, you know?
I think, I think that's a question for Mariah. I don't know, I, I mean, we don't, I, I don't enforce HOA regulations. So I'm not sure that I could ever, the zoning ordinance can say what they can and can't have in their rules. Um, so I, I don't know.
Because there were some other things about clotheslines and that kind of thing.
And would we be able to make that retroactive to existing?
No, I guess you could ask her, but typically zoning can't be retroactive, however, uh an ordinance could be, correct?
I don't know, but like your HOA.
Is it a legal entity?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a separate entity from the township and uh, you know, I don't enforce their rules.
Yeah, so what would be, yeah, we, well, I guess it would.
Yeah.
So the other thing that I wanted to say too is like, it sounds like we have another decision point, not to get on this right now, but the scheme of the state allows for local approval long as we don't do anything more restrictive than the state scheme. Um, but if the developer or whoever doesn't like it, they can apply to the state. Um, and we have to decide in our ordinance, do we want to set up our own CREEO, they, they refer to it, in, in, in line with all these deadlines and processes too. So I suppose we'll talk about that at some point.
Yeah, and I think part of it is, okay, so we've got the accessory stuff. It sounds like we're pretty happy with what, the way we're doing it and just sort of put that in black and white. And then then to discuss it, then we have the state stuff that they're doing then.
No, 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 the state allows for us to make the decision first. It allows for us to have a system where they, that forces, like on a commercial end, forces them to come to us and seek.
Actually, actually, that isn't true anymore because of the new legislation that was passed.
No, what's with, I saw that in this, these handouts that were the MPSC process and it talks about the CREEO, which is the, would be the local process.
Yeah, but they just passed legislation that if it's fifty megawatts, megawatts or larger, which is a huge array, I don't even think we have the land in Siou that could be assembled for that kind of. It, it is permitted by the state.
Oh, I see.
Now they are, there is a, a group that is um, uh, collecting signatures.
Look on page forty-one, it, it provides for the local CREEO and it talks about fifty. It talks about the large principle. But anyway, okay, but maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Cause it just was passed in this, this fall.
It, it still requires local approval, but the state is saying, it's, the state is saying you have to meet, these are the setbacks they have to meet. You cannot have greater restriction, greater restrictions than the state.
It still comes through site plan approval.
It still comes through site plan approval, but it would not, you know, you can't, you can't, the state is saying you can't make it more restrictive than these.
Right, but we don't even have to have it, but we can, and I think that's a decision point, but, but it's not true, it's not, it's not resolved because we don't have that large a property right now. What if, and this happened at one of our local uh, uh neighbor townships where they wanted to put in a, can't remember if it was O'Dea or, anyway. They wanted to put in, one of the farmers in that township was willing to lease some of their acres and it's, it's company wanted to come in with, what's we would call a large principal outfit and the township neighbors and all that got into the war. So we have large farm areas where people could do that, they could lease some of their property, so.
Yeah, no, I, but I think it, what it is, is okay, we don't have a choice for fifty megawatts and larger right now, what that ordinance would be. But we, we don't have, you can't, it's not permitted. A farmer who had a separate piece of land that wasn't associated, that wasn't, we only permit it as an accessory use right now. We don't allow it as a primary use. That's why we need, that's really why we need this or, this solar ordinance. We need to enable farmers to be able to put solar arrays on, but the question is.
Saying the same thing. I thought you just said, we don't need to do that, we don't need to.
Oh, no, we definitely.
Cause we don't have that land. Okay, I'm gonna see here.
It meant like the, the fifty megawatt facilities, it'd be very hard to put together that, uh, you need, I don't know, a thousand, what is, there was that um, in Sarah's um piece, they talked about the acreage that you would need to do a fifty watt, megawatt solar. And it's like thousands of acres.
A thousand, thousand sixteen hundred acres is one number they came up with to get like a hundred megawatts. So like a five hundred, eight hundred acres, we just don't have a continuous piece of land.
Yes, but I mean, it could, somebody might have been able to manipulate it, but yeah, so we're really dealing with and, and there, there was legislation, it did pass, that talked about enabling you to be solar, which it, it used like a five megawatt, um, so, um, yeah, so if you're up at um, you know, fifty megawatts, yeah, you're, you're in that.
So I have a question for you.
Three hundred, five hundred.
Laura, let's say I wanted to put an accessory use solar panels and on an adjacent property that I would own and I wanted to create a community of users. Let's say five or, let's say three or four other households would feed, that would feed the energy for three or four households. Is that prevented by our ordinance now or is that something that would, you're thinking?
Is, is this array on your property where your home is located or is it on a vacant piece of property?
It's on a vacant piece of property that I would own.
Would not be allowed.
It's a primary use.
That's a primary use. We only allow them as an accessory to a principal, so it has to be, the principal use of the property now would be a residential home, a commercial business. And we would allow them as an accessory to that on a roof or on the, on the property as an array. But it would not be allowed as its sole use of a piece of property.
So I'm getting confused because it's not a principal use, it's not commercial. It would be no selling of energy or anything like that. But these four homes would, there would be feed into each four of these homes.
Would it matter whether it's a separate lot versus one contiguous?
It doesn't matter.
It does matter. It does matter. This cannot be the principal structure on a lot. It cannot be the only structure on the lot.
Okay, and so let's say I do that on my property where my home is. I could do that, I can do it in that instance.
Make a mini grid, move your neighbors.
DT is.
Yeah, you, you.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't go into DTE.
From a zoning standpoint, you could.
Partner with, I don't want to partner with DTE. I've never heard, nothing I've heard about going through DTE makes me feel like the credits are worth it.
It's not worth it.
So what, what do you say, Laura?
Uh, and from a zoning standpoint, I wouldn't care who, where, who you're given your power to, you could collect it and not even use it for yourself. But um I don't know as far as electrical permits, what would be required? Building per, you know, mechanical permits, what would be required? And then that whoever the energy is going to or, you know, being stored for, uh, you know, whatever utility. Um, I don't know what their regulations are, but from a zoning perspective, I wouldn't care.
Okay.
That's a hard one. Is the property, is it the primary thing on the property or is it the secondary?
And so that's really the heart of our discussion is how big, what are the setbacks? You know, so we're creating, you know, solar as a, a principal use. Is it, is it in every zone district? Is it allowed as a principal use? Is it, is it a conditional use in some zoning districts? Is it, is it a conditional use in some zoning districts? You know, so that's really the, the bigger discussion. Cause it sounds like we're pretty satisfied with what we're doing currently as an accessory structure. We just need to codify it.
Let me throw a really interesting question out here and I don't know what the answer to it is. For land that has a conservation easement, I guess from a zoning standpoint, right now, solar would not be permitted. I don't know if solar would be per, permitted because of the conservation easement, depending on what the conservation easement said. That's just an interesting question, I guess, depending on.
They did, the legislation did allow, um, there is the farm, the agricultural piece where they get a tax credit or exemption.
Yeah. So if, if you're part of the farmland, uh, the PA one sixteen farmland preservation, um, program where you get tax credits for your farm, um, they do allow you to pause. Um, typically that program, you, you put a certain number of acre, acres in and you get a tax credit back. Um, but what they would, and it's for a, a number of years up to ninety-nine. You can enroll your, your property for up to ninety-nine years. And so most are like twenty-five to thirty-year increments, but if you are within a PA one sixteen currently and you would like to put, um, solar on your property, what they will do is pause, um, your tax credits. You just won't receive any during the life of, um, the solar on the farm, uh, but then, um, it would, it would be reenacted after, um, if they were removed or whatever. So yeah, the farmland preservation that's separate, um, we'd have to look and see what, you know, if that's a concern, what, you know, or or if we would want to know what properties, if any, are, uh, PA one sixteen within the township. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research to find that, but.
Barry has the list of those.
We also have preserved open space, um, property that isn't farmland.
Correct.
And I think that the agreement that the, uh, LPC puts out says you can't put structures on.
That's correct. There's a certain, there's a percentage that you can do.
Oh, is that?
You can do.
Area wise?
Yeah, there's a, there's, you know, typically because they have buildings or outbuildings and they want to facilitate, like if somebody wants to build a barn or whatever.
They want, well, farming is the easiest example, you know, to have some sort of structure basis.
But typically, I mean, you could probably within that, you might be able to do solar to support the farm, but you wouldn't be, any of the conservation, ever, the current ones that we do don't have, uh, provision for solar at all. Yeah. And so OPC would have to, OPC would have to.
Revised or just an idea I had. I guess the other question I have is there any district that it makes less sense to have solar? Or that we might want to consider being more restricted of both.
I mean, that's a good way to approach it because, yeah, think about it. It'd be good everywhere, but where? I have a question. It, also this is related to setbacks too, is I'm thinking about carports or solar on parking lots. Parking lots, can you put parking lots in the side setback, but not in the front? I'm just trying to remember. Um, but you wouldn't be able to put like a carport on it if it was in the side setback or no, or yes?
Well, parking can go, the parking setback, yeah, I believe is ten feet from the side and rear. So parking can go all the way, um, to ten feet, but the, the building setback is different from the parking setback. Right? Yeah.
What about the carport or the?
That would be a structure that would have to meet the minimum setbacks of the district, whatever they are. So, you know, in a, I don't have the ordinance out right now, but let's say in the commercial district, the rear setbacks thirty feet. They would, the carport would have to be thirty feet from the rear setback. So what, so, um, an array would also have to be thirty feet from the rear setback.
Yeah. So a bunch of things to kind of sort through, but you know, I'm trying to think of, I mean, Laura, I'm just thinking, would there be anywhere that you wouldn't want to put solar as a primary use? I mean, I got, I can see, I, I could see, cause you could, you can do it as an accessory use anywhere. Um, it is just the setbacks, but I'm just thinking of, um, it, for instance, you want to use prime high density property as solar generation, if it really makes sense to.
But as a principal use?
As a primary use of principal use, yeah.
You want, why would you want to?
No, I, I'm saying.
Well, and I don't think, I don't think we necessarily need to restrict that through ordinance because I think the market would bear out what makes monetary sense of that.
That's probably true.
The, the other way to think of, the other way to think about, um, instead of thinking about districts, Jan and I talked about this when we were putting this memo together is there, we could also do an overlay. And one of the maps I want to provide you that I don't have yet is, um, maps of where the, the high tension lines are currently located in the township. Because properties adjacent to and near high tension lines, um, are, are are prime for, for solar, um, because they don't have to provide that transfer further into the grid, right? So I think, I think part of our discussion has to be where are those lines? What types of properties are adjacent to freeways and, and the ITC lines or other power lines that run through the township? And where, where would it make the most sense, um, for solar to locate i- in those areas? And then of course you're going to have other properties that might have as accessory use or as car, you know, for carports and rooftop and arrays, um. And we can talk about districts too, but I think, I think it's going to be important that we kind of look at it, um, through districts, but also maybe the potential of an overlay. Um, and then, and then we can start talking about, hey, once we see where these might be located, what setbacks make sense? How, how many megawatts are we talking? How large of a facility can we even accommodate? Is it, is twenty acres the largest, um, piece of land that, you know, that, I don't know. I don't know what that, what that means yet. So I think there's still a lot of open-ended questions before we can really, you know, dig down into what our regulations are. Um, and that's why I pro- provided this memo with all of these questions so that we can, um, as we start talking about it, you can think about it and go back to it later and, and, you know, maybe look through the ordinance and, and think about, um, as you drive Jackson Road, what types of, um, businesses might be utilizing as an accessory? Or, um, as you drive through the township, what, what flat, um, larger pieces of land, um, near a power, near the power lines might be, might be best suited.
So we're talking pri- principal use, um, generation when you're talking about the overlay. Why freeway? I, I, I understand the transmission line mapping, but why freeway? What is that? How does that help? The, uh, the primary principal energy.
In some cases, power, power lines will run, um, adjacent or near some freeway interchanges.
Sure. So we just concentrate on those.
But, but also, you know, uh, the backside of some properties, um, I don't know, a, a, along the freeway are open and, you know, there, they have limited access maybe. Um, and so, you know, they're, and they're not bothering anybody out there, right? They're adjacent to the freeway.
Yeah. So I wanted to make sure I understood what you said, that the, the high tension lines are suitable for that. Why did you say that?
Connecting to the grid. Connecting the power generated into the grid.
The, the most, the most suitable locations, Kim, are typically near or adjacent to, um, power lines. And because that, that's where they're trying to get the power to, back to. So it just makes sense to look at where are our power lines located? And what land is available adjacent to those, um, that could be suitable.
You mean like Stile Church and Wagner where ITC is located?
Yeah.
Yeah. So like, Lithia has the ITC power lines. Oh, right. Adjacent to Lithia and it goes through. And so anywhere along that corridor would be.
And how far away from that power line routing can, I mean, is, is efficient? I mean, is fifty feet too far? Is, uh, five thousand feet too far?
No, I, I'd have to talk to my, um, my solar person that cites again, I haven't talked to them in a while, but I, I, I believe at one time, you know, if you're within a mile, um, you know, and they're looking, typically looking at large, large properties, right? So, um, they're looking within a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I'm just looking at, and if, any, if you do download this and really look at it because it's, it's a really thoughtful piece. And the community solar legislation that they were talking about enabling was at five megawatt. And that's probably around, you know, um, ten, twenty, so it's somewhere around forty, you know, the, it, it.
Acres?
Forty acres is a pretty typical, like, that's how four, forty acre plots were sold, right? That was a pretty. So if you, if we think about, and there are a lot of, there's still, you know, forty, a hundred acre farms in, in ZIO or other pieces of property. And, you know, so that's sort of what I'm seeing as trying to be supportive of because that could be, once it was enabled, a group of people could get together and invest in, you know, a community solar kind of operation. And I, I community solar has got to be here at, at some point in time. And, you know, that would be, you know, to me, that's a scale that's useful and you know, supportive of some of the legislation that's happening. And then, you know, so I sort of see, okay, maybe it's a you know, you have a, an ordinance up to, up to five megawatts. And then we look at what's the gap between that and fifty that the state is legislating? And how do we deal with, you know, something that's larger than that?
We're, we have to be aware of increased efficiency of the panels as they develop because five megawatts now takes this much space. Five megawatts, ten years from now is going to take less space.
Good point. That's a really good one. They are in, in incredibly increasing the efficiency. Maybe it's the, the land, the land size and not necessarily the power. That's a really good, that's a really good one.
One thing that I'm thinking here, so when you put solar in on farm, you are well, into acreage, you are, it, it's incompatible with having trees, you know? And my neighbor has a forty acre farm, I'm, and half of it's covered with trees. And he just farms the open area, but you put in forty acres of solar panels, you cut down every tree on property.
And then you. Then you'd have the issue of the, the.
Tree fund.
Tree fund.
Still important.
Oh, so I'm talking about tree fund, not too, too far afield. We are updating on, I'll see behind all of that.
Actually, I can tell you where the. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We'll wrap this up for now.
Yeah, that's, that's, so, um, encourage you to do that and, and it's a webinar too.
What are the next steps? Where are we on this?
So I, I would encourage you to go through, um, what's it called, what's that booklet called, Jan? The, the.
Planning and zoning for solar energy systems, a guide for local governments.
Yes. So that has a lot of useful information. It actually has template zoning ordinances in it. So I would, um, if you're going to look at anything, I would recommend going through that document and making any notes that, of things that maybe you, you think are good or you don't like. And then, um, Jan and I are going to work on some maps, um, and we're going to start talking about, uh, the next time we'll talk about the maps and potential, um, locations or, or zoning districts, um, that we are, might be interested in allowing, uh, principal solar. And we're also going to start trying to figure out, um, size, whether it's megawatts or, uh, by acreage. Sound good?
Sounds good. Are you going to put, are you going to put those maps, um, on the planning commission's site?
Yes, but I don't have them yet. So when, so I will, yes, when the next time, um, this comes on the agenda, any maps will be part of the agenda packet.
Well, why didn't you put them on sooner? When you get.
Yeah. I mean, when, when it's time.
Sure. The only reason I was thinking of is that it just gives us a longer look.
Well, I mean, Laura can provide them to us as soon as she has them. And then it goes on the agenda once the agenda gets posted.
What will the map be of existing solar and sizes or what?
No, I'd like to provide, um, a map of where the power lines currently are. And, um, you know, vacant properties adjacent to that. But I think you should also start thinking about the zoning districts and if there are any districts that you would want to omit uh, principal solar from. And I think we, I, I think we can't really talk about that until we know the size that we're, that we're dealing with, right? Um, I, I think, I think we got to think about it more holistic, but I'm going to try to put some maps together to, to kind of show you what, um, where the power lines are, but also the size of, uh, facility based on the, the acreage, right? So if my, five megawatts is, I don't know, forty acres, what does that look like in a section of the township? Um, what does ten look like? We're going to try to, try to provide some visual for, for you to look at.
Yeah. I was just going to ask, how did you decide? I mean, when you're hypothetical, you said five, I mean, where, how did you?
There's a chart in that, in that, yeah, that document.
Doesn't break it down the way we wanted to, but so we're, she was reading in between the lines.
Yeah. Doing fortunate math, right?
As Bob was pointing out, that's current.
Current as.
Efficiency of production.
Yeah. Okay.
So is this something we need and we just haven't done yet?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think you need to address this as a principal use of, of land. I definitely think so. And um, especially if you want to pr- to allow smaller than what the state's going to regulate. I think you have to, you, you, you're going to have to, um, define it and provide some regulations.
Okay. All right. What's the timing on that? Once the state law go into effect and like, you know, when, when do we need to?
The state law goes into effect in November, um, as of right now. Like Jan said, there is, there is some contingent. You know, there's a group that's, you know, trying to counteract it. Um, so we're not e- exactly sure, um, what's going to happen, but it is, it is slated for November thirtieth or I think um, to go into effect.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So do you need to do study? There is that, um, the webinar that Bob.
On Thursday that I'm signing up for. And I don't know how, you know, how it'll really affect our discussion, but anybody else could sign up for it too.
Yeah. And, and there are other, some other resources on, if you go to the Catalyst Communities website under energy and renewable, there are some other resources on, in, in that, um, on that website too, on, on solar zoning and.
A while ago, you sent us an email attachment about solar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, then, uh, we'll, uh, pause this discussion because I think it's, yeah. I definitely going to be taking a little bit of time. So let's go to, um, reports and commission activity. So, um, uh, we don't have OHM on tonight, but, and they said they really didn't have a, any additional, um, information for us, but Laura, do you want to talk about, um, submissions that have come in?
Sure. So Honey Creek Business Park has submitted for site plan. Um, if you recall, you, they came before you for conditional use for that's on Zeb Road, uh, just south of Jackson Road for, uh, drive-through and retail, um, building with a hotel. But they were unable to get a variance for the height of the hotel. So then they came back as a planned unit development. Um, since that time, they've just, they've, um, I guess re, re-looked at their, um, their development and they want to move forward with um, the conditional use and they have lessened the hotel to three stories, which would be allowed, um, in the district. So um, you'll be seeing that, um, not, we just received that in, so not quite, um, not, probably not the next meeting, maybe the meeting after that. Um, we also received, uh, Firestone Site Plan, uh, Stacey. Uh, Stacy and I have already reviewed that once, um, and I understand they've resubmitted. I haven't seen it yet, so that is a site plan that will be coming before you. Um, we already talked about Trail Woods and the realignment of the road, I know that's forthcoming. I think those are the big ones, that's all I can think of.
Slippery chickens.
Slim chickens.
Oh.
Um, you approved their site plan, uh, we are in detail engineering review of that site plan. Once they've, uh, worked out all of O H M, and I had one comment, I believe, from, um, the last review. I believe they are resubmitting also and that will go on a board agenda.
Anything on, um, the open era where they have, uh, not fast food, but something close to it, but a little better?
No word from them, haven't heard back from them.
Courtesy management?
Yeah, oh, the, oh, what is that called? Yeah, sort of like, it, it's fast food with a larger dining space.
Fast casual? No, I've heard nothing, I've heard nothing. I have not received any information from them since.
Or we have people here who are new to the commission. And, and also as old, you know, original or older ones. Jan, when you bring up the, the. I, I can't really think, the, the development by name, there's, they, they have no idea where it is. There was a discussion about having a map updated that showed where all these. Or at least a list of all the, the different developments that have been proposed, I, you've got an old map, but. Have you updated it recently?
I have not, but I'll add it to my list.
Yeah, so it's a proposed developments, um, as opposed to approved, because we have one. We'll just did one that was a, a, approved one.
Right, so it's as they come in and they, and they get on the agenda. It would be nice if they were shown where they were and just, we can track it that way. I, I have a better way of tracking things if they're visual.
Well, I, I'm happy to update the project map, we, we were doing that, um, quarterly. Um, it's difficult to do every time that a project comes in, because sometimes we get many and, um. We could be updating that map weekly, but I will do my best to update the project map. It does show, it, it, it's meant to show projects in progress, right? So, projects under review, projects, um, approved projects, and then projects under construction is what it had shown in the past.
And, and we can take one that's been updated as a January twenty twenty four, and then we can start marking our own copy up and. And then every quarter, get an update from you, then we can throw out our old handwritten one.
Sure, sure.
And, and that would also be good to put on the website somehow, uh, so people, it, it, it's a great visual for the public too.
I would appreciate.
Yeah, I'll do that. The last time we got one was, um, I was just looking at my database.
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one.
Oh, I've done one since twenty twenty one, so we'll make sure you get the updated one.
Yeah, we're the last to get. The board gets the stuff we don't get.
Laura, is there something going on with Dairy Queen since? I've heard like vague rumors about it and I saw the financial end of it in the board packet, but.
Oh, there was a pre-op meeting.
I have, I have been, yes, we had a pre-op meeting with, uh, Dairy Queen. Drive-through restaurant, they want to locate at the Menards Outlet at Stabler and Jackson Road. Um, the issue is that the outlets are zoned C two. And a drive-through would not be allowed under that zoning district. Drive-throughs are allowed in the C three zoning district. So in order for the drive-through to be located there, it would have to be part of a mixed-use development. Um, which means there would have to be a permitted C two use on that site in order to allow the drive-through. And so that has been, um. I've discussed that with the Realtor, the Menards and the potential Dairy Queen, um, there. They looked at alternate sites, um, which didn't seem to pan out. Um, and now there's talk of them, um, developing something like. I don't want, something like the Starbucks or, um, some of the other drive-throughs we've seen that have a retail component. Um, with the restaurant so that they would be, they would be allowed to be there as a mixed-use development.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Laura? All right, um, chair report, uh, involved in, uh, a couple of activities. One, we had the, um, transportation, uh, group that is working on. Understanding the, the, the transportation service in SIO and also looking at, um. A recommendation, there, there are several charges for that committee from, um, the trustees. And Kim is on it as the representative wave and we have the consultants of, um, from. Uh, SEMCOP, um, AAA TA and Watts.
So I'm actually on it as a.
As a wave.
Plant commission.
No, I'm on it as planning, you're on it as wave, I think.
Well, that's not how it was.
Oh, okay.
Alright, talk to me about.
Oh, alright, well.
It just happens I'm on the board, but that wasn't.
And you were a bus driver, so that really gives you, I mean, that was key insight, I have to say. That was awesome, but anyway.
Yeah, when he started talking trans and speak.
Uh, so those are, um, recorded meetings and also there'll be minutes. And, uh, so th- those will be posted on the website, uh, once we get all that documentation done. And it was very interesting to talk to, um, one of the things that we learned with AAA TA. Um, they are increasing the, the service. Um, in, in the Jackson Road corridor and it'll be, um. Is that the one, was it fifteen minutes or every fifteen minutes?
At peak time.
At peak times. Um, and, and that was a part of, um, it was, it's already included in what SIO is paying for. And it, some of the stuff that we're trying to understand is. Um, any, eh, anyone who has, that qualifies as, eh, with some disability or whatever, or is a senior. Can, and they're within a mile.
Three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile from any fixed route can use a ride, which is like. You know, will, will connect you.
It's a bus, I mean, it's a small bus?
And, yeah, and so I think there's quite a bit of transportation availability to SIO residents. That really may not be out there either, so part of that is.
In addition to the door-to-door service that wave.
Wave also has started ours.
Did I think correctly, wave isn't charging anybody in February?
Yeah, we're doing a no fee thing.
Get people used to it.
Or to try it.
Well, there's some, there's some talk about getting rid of fees.
And funding through.
I'm not a strong proponent of that, but there's some talk about doing it, I mean, it's, it's, what we recover in fees is pretty small. And, um, it might encourage, uh, increased ridership. Um, you know, Washington DC did that several years ago. They got rid of all the fairs and it didn't turn out good, and I can't remember, this has been a while. Um, and so they went back to fairs, so I don't know.
Didn't financially, it didn't turn out good?
I don't remember why, I'll be honest with you, I'll, I'll kind of Google it a little bit, see if I can.
Yeah, there, there's another, a couple of other municipalities that actually did free, but, and have continued it. So it'd be interesting to see that, but yeah, I, I, I was surprised that AAA TA also said it was. Fairs only paid for about ten percent of their, their overall, uh, operations. Yeah, yeah.
It, ma- mass transit is expensive, it's capital intensive, it's driver intensive. So, um, to be able to run. Uh, a transit company, uh. All fee-based is just unrealistic, because you, you would have to pay twenty dollars to ride. A big route or something. So it's heavily subsidized by the federal and the state. And, um, but, um. You know, you try to recover as much as you can, and then door-to-door service is exponentially more expensive. Because now you're carrying less people over a wider area.
And, and I think the other insight that was interesting is, um, the ridership is somewhere maybe. Seventy percent of what it was prior to the pandemic. It had, not all. It's, it's come up, but, um, and they talked a little bit about, um, the rapid. They're, they're gonna be doing some more express, uh, like from between Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor along Washina. And, and actually Jackson is kind of tied into, um, uh, the Jackson corridor. Um, is, is kind of tied into that loop, um, that express.
I'm not so clear that we won't have to pony up money for that. Because there's a distinction, we have our own millage and then there's this Ypsilanti. Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti Township, et cetera, that has this sort of overall millage that they're all, so there's like all this expansion going on, so.
Right.
I think we need to be careful about assuming that we're gonna be the beneficiaries of all those changes.
Yeah, well, I think, and they did, um, adopt their twenty forty-five plan, so that's something that. People could refer to, because basically when they say this is the service we're looking at providing and so forth, that's sort of like. You're buying into that plan and that's essentially what you're saying is, yeah, the. So anyway, that, I, that was very interesting and I think as we go along, we'll learn more and. It, it's definitely, there is a communication piece about what is available. Cause I don't think most people really know what's available to SIO.
Well, you have to say that, um. What we pay in our village right now, we're subsidizing the Jackson Cor- corridor. With very little door-to-door going on.
Yeah, the bulk of the ridership is the Jackson Road.
Yeah. And the bulk of the payers of that service don't live on Jackson. So. Let's keep that in mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
About responsible taxation.
Um, the, the other piece, um, is, uh, working with, um, Jackie Cortor and. Um, Anna, um, home on the tree fund policy. And, uh, looking at, we're, we're almost ready to, you know, uh, put out a draft. It should be end of the month, maybe the first, the very beginning of February. And, um, the last few pieces are, um, updating the types of trees. And, and there'll be types of trees for reforestation and types of trees that'll go in like residential areas and right-of-ways. So a differentiation a little bit, because you have, you know, there's, there's a difference there in the, the ecosystem. What's that?
Pine, red pine, jack pine versus whatever.
Yeah, right, the species, yeah, and then, um, then, uh, Norm Roller has, uh, finished. We just, um, has, has just finished, um, we're fine-tuning, um. It, it basically, uh, the metrics of what's the tree canopy coverage in SIO, the average? And then what is the average in the residential areas? So you can, we can visually see areas that could benefit from, um, a larger tree canopy cover. So a little bit of a metric, um, along with, um, looking at three different types of. Um, reforestation and the park or the preserves, um, uh. Um, adding trees in SIO parks and then adding trees in residential areas, those are kind of the. And then it would be every year, there would be a plan for, um, you know. A certain amount of funds and a certain amount of those funds would also be designated a small amount for maintenance. So that if we get, the preserves get hit with oak wilt or some other issues. There is some funding there that can, um, help, uh, maintain, maybe there, yeah, it would be protection of the trees.
So our natural beauty road, which is Marshall Road. We're starting to, um, thin, because the trees, some of the trees are very old. Tall, very old and tall, and they're, you know, taking some hits, and so I, I just thought about. Few months ago, like, who's responsible for replacing that?
The homeowner? Well, property owner.
Well, you can, you can also bet that a lot of those trees are actually in the right-of-way.
I was gonna say.
And.
They are all in the right-of-way.
Yeah, and, and, and that's a dicey bit with the road commission.
They don't want them there.
They don't want the trees there at all?
Right.
They'd rather right-of-way be a right-of-way general.
Yeah.
Right-of-way with no trees, no grass, no.
I guess that's just a caution about who's responsible for those.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, that ain't our land. You know, the thing about that is, is that they set the speed limit based on. How safe it is to go that speed and part of that safety and how many trees are, how close to the edge of the road. And I say plant them as close as you can and slow the cars down, make the speed limit forty miles an hour.
There is no speed limit on Marshall.
Well, it's fifty-five.
That's a dangerous proposition.
How do you know it's fifty-five?
Because if I know speed limit, it's fifty-five. It's, it's access points, driveways and roads and oftentimes rural roads, dirt roads, park road, fifty-five miles. If it's unregulated, it's fifty-five.
Just don't get the word out about that. Okay, um, and then I guess the, um, I'll just do E S T F at the same time. Um, uh, we're looking at, um. October sixth, um, for the sustainability fair at Meyer. In conjunction with the Southeast EV vehicle stuff. We have to, um, you know, talk with Meyer and, and that type of thing, but it, the whole idea would be. You know, get it out there, um, and where people are as opposed to.
Meyer Parkahot or Meyer?
By the town.
Okay, and where people are.
So it'd be a fun day and, yeah, so it might be fun. Um, the other thing is, uh, looking at, um, an electronics recycling possibly. We're getting, getting proposals for that, um, looking at, uh, some sort of, um, you know. Uh, additional like food waste composting, um, o- options and expanding some recycling options there.
So you say E V car demos?
It, it's a E V, their owners, it's an owners association that promote. Um, is so we had a few of those folks here.
The bikes were cool, the floors, it was, it was, it was a hands-on demo, it was pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I think it'd be, you know, get it out to more people and they can see that, by the way.
Now you can take your electronics to. No, closer.
Oh.
The, um, computer place right on Jackson. Pardon?
Computer alley.
Computer alley.
Oh, that's good, we should put that out, okay.
Didn't know about that.
I didn't know about that, I knew about stables, but not. Okay, um, all right.
Is that in addition, in addition to or in lieu of the one that's on the Halloween?
That would be in lieu.
Okay, changing the date, okay, in format.
Right, location kind of thing, yeah, cause, you know, we've got another, um. A, election coming up, uh, two, which, you know, the signs and all of that. Added to kind of the, the chaos of it.
All right.
Yeah, so that was some of the thoughts, so those are some of the, um, the pieces also. We've, um, joined, um, Michigan Green Communities, um, the township did. Um, we're, I'm looking at what we've accomplished and so forth and it's, uh, because. If you get a certain level of things that you've accomplished, you can get, um, like a fellow to work with you on a sustainability project. For the summer, um, you know, some interesting things, and you're in a, a network of, 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 um, municipalities. The, the other thing is we, um, did have a, an implementation discussion of the environmental sustainability. Uh, comment action plan where we took, basically it was that, I don't. uh comment action plan where we took, basically it was that, I don't know if you remember the summary sheet. Um, and uh people talked about the prioritization of things and what they wanted to accomplish in the next year. So we could get it in the budget and so forth, and I'm compiling that right now, so things are happening.
You're busy.
It's mine, um and then uh as uh John put in the BOT report, the the J-Rod proposal is before the um to appropriate funds and um provide a board of trustees uh representatives, um so hopefully that will start.
What is the J-Rod?
That's the where the, you know, the committee of the DDA.
Jackson Road Corridor.
Yeah, right.
I hate that, I hate that it's reviewed as the J-Rod.
But Jackson Road Corridor. Put using that the, it, I mean, that's the zoning overlay for it, but it's really the Jackson Road Corridor, yeah. Okay, um.
So we're waiting on, I was gonna ask you about where that's at.
Yeah.
So we're waiting on them to fund it, fund the committee and decide who's gonna be a rep.
From the trustees, yeah.
Uh tentatively, I know my name is on there, I think your name is on there, Chan.
Yeah, well, we are, we already. Yeah, so I think we're good except for the the trustees, the board. Yeah, you get to, you get to, you know, you can put your DDA hat on for that. So um John, uh anything you wanna highlight, any questions for John on the um BOT two pager? Yeah, thank you, well, it's been a month, too.
Yeah, yeah, through the holidays.
Yeah.
Um, Col, if you have any questions, it's uh for those uh listing, it's uh gave it to Christie yesterday. And or maybe Fran, I don't know, they put it up on the website, so if you wanna see it, it's on there, my phone, my mobile number's on there, it's all my favorites, questions, complaints, whatever. Um, that's it.
Okay, ZBA.
Got a meeting on December twenty first where we approved a variance for setback relief. Labeled as expansion of existing nonconforming structure, which is basically a house on SIO Road at historic garage and they wanted to expand to make it more practical for modern living. We also had a meeting last Thursday on the eighteenth for an administrative review for interpretation of the ordinance on calculating signage allowance for one of the Meyer outbuildings for Peteaway. We agreed that the township zoning administrative group, Carl Wardman, had correctly interpreted the ordinance.
Someone appealed to the ZBA regarding?
Peteaway was looking for inclusion of their western frontage as part of the science, they could get bigger size. The fact that they're putting another building up there, the construction should start late this winter or early spring means it's not really facing either a road or a parking lot. And that means that eighty foot part of the building can't be considered frontage for signage allowance.
More land, bigger sign, kind of thing.
Well, but they also wanted to be equivalent to tropical smoothie.
Right.
But because their eastern side faces Z, they have larger signage allowance. Well, and they came in as an administrative review, not a variance, that was also important to recognize, discussion.
Yeah, that's interesting, okay.
They're gonna come back with a variance now?
The owner said timing didn't allow it because we made that option available. But whether they do or don't, don't know, because they would have to refile and do it because it's a different approach.
Request, okay, DDA.
A meeting two weeks ago, yeah, two weeks ago, um sort of briefed after we asked the board trustees for some money from the tree fund, some money for paving Dino Drive and uh those requests were unsuccessful, unfortunately, um but I do know that we've been working out some things, there's still interest in paving Dino Drive, we have another meeting in March and I think there might be a new approach to that. Hopefully, uh and there is definitely some work on the boulevard with landscaping coming, we have voted to approve the next phase from Meyer west out to Baker, so they're going to tear out the not so nice looking bushes, trees and plant things that are more hardy. And also plant some of the areas just back to grass, um so that way.
Like grass or prairie grass, like Kentucky glue?
The grass that matches the rest of the boulevard, I have to.
How about no mow grass? Yeah, they have that on North Campus.
Or clover or something that's.
Right, right, yeah.
Definitely is a possibility in the future, I I would hope, but at least at this point, it's going to go back to grass. There's, there's also a cost review going on for the mowing situation. Yes, there's some, there is a contention between the board and the DDA about that. The fund that has the money to pay for that's been historically funded by parcels that were taken when the DDA was formed to take Jackson Road and that money doesn't replenish itself because there's very few parcels that are left of Albert. Oddly shaped or tiny, so once that money's gone, there will be a dedicated funding source of.
For the maintenance.
Other than the DDA paying for it directly, which the road commission only mow twice a year.
All right.
Need to go to the no mow grass.
Um, and and it'd be interesting to talk to the U of M and see how that isn't happening and what kind of maintenance they do for that. Because they have all of the interior part of North Campus, that whole mall area. Has the no mow. Yeah, um, yeah, and I haven't talked to anybody about it, all I know is it's there. That's probably the largest installation that I know of. Um, okay, uh where are we with RAC?
What is RAC?
I was leaning over to see if you had the St. Louis idea.
Yeah.
Which is uh wrong.
Okay, so you're still the.
I am still there, but this should be the last one.
Okay.
Meeting on the third, uh primary discussion points were on funding and what should be done for twenty twenty four with the roads. We have a list of things that were done through the SAD, but if we expand beyond that, how do we then include other roads and should we include other roads for the ARP money that's going to be used uh this year, so that's still an ongoing discussion, I think we've got till May to get something officially to Washtenaw County Road Commission, but we've gotta get to the board earlier than that. Um, and then there's the broader discussion of after this year, what's the funding mechanism and then what does it cover, and that's been an ongoing discussion. Second part of the meeting was teams been working on an SAD booklet for explaining how self-assessment districts work and being able to then potentially, should the board want, expand it to things other than. So we edited in the meeting the first three pages of the stocking.
And when you say beyond road, what would that be?
Sidewalk pathways, I mean, anything that might come in that someone wants.
Say what you just said, sewers?
Potentially, I mean, you get, it's, we're doing it specifically for roads.
District geo.
But the thought was, can you then adapt it once we're done for something more than just roads, sidewalks came up in particular because no one really owns sidewalks at the moment.
Okay, interesting, all right, so we still have to revolve what what's happening with any kind of representation or whatever. Okay, all right, um and then well, there's PPP. This is wrong again, okay, um then land preservation PPP.
PPP, I'll refer you to the bottom of page two, where the Parks, Preserves and Pathways Report will be presented by Director Anna Cohn. And she's gonna be talking about the accomplishments of the four uh kind of intern stewards that she had. Uh, the the new trail maps and the new trails and the maps and the maintenance and um natural resource uh kind of preservation and research, uh future projects of Township Hall Park kinda behind us, DD Marshall Parking Lot, Van Curler Parking Lot on the north. Uh, we're also, she's gonna talk about the Zeb Road Pathway, which is uh the goal to get the dense neighborhoods along Zeb Road connected to the border to border uh um two or three miles to the north across the river a- a- and uh one of the, there there was a phase which was five, which was like, oh, let's put it better by crossing across ninety four and um I'm not, so not so fast, yo, that's ours. And it's gonna, so that that didn't go through, so they wanna reallocate the money that would have gone there and there already is there already is a crossing there, it's not a great one, but there is one, but to try to get to the the connected connector um across the river, pedestrian bridge across the river uh and then up 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 the hill to the uh border to border trail so that, you know, our order, our pathway will get us to the border to border trail, bike, run, walk, whatever.
That stretches a little dicey with the railroad tracks and.
Railroad tracks and the river.
Yeah, that, so that's, you know, it's. So, yeah, there's the Diana Zasinski grant, MEDC grant was like, I think a couple of seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grants and it's gonna kind of apply it to a different.
Section of it.
Move the money northward, as you will.
So are they looking at um putting in a bridge alongside the existing bridge over the river?
I think it's gonna be a a a pedestrian bridge. So, yeah, so um another one was the uh the completion of the Upland Drive kind of connector which links four subdivisions. Uh, Anna was real happy with how that came out and there were improvements to three, well, I say AATA, but there's another A there. Uh, the N, AATA bus stops and then uh uh Van Curler Exploration Trail and one of the things we talked about um is like, who do we reach out to to try to get safe pedestrian access from the dense area down there where Upland connects with SIO Church, how do you get people across the street and down the road to the library, to the Ice Cube, to high school? Um joggers, runners, uh a- a- and you know, who do you reach out to, is it, is it a, does OHM plan something, do you reach out to uh Alicia Raybeck, is it a Watts thing, is it, how do you, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but how do you anticipate what needs to be done down the future, how do you, how do you plan for that?
Here, River Watership Council.
So TAP is not existing.
It's PPP and.
We need to clean this list.
Yeah, yeah, I I couldn't take one test.
Right.
So here in River Watership Council, that their quarterly meeting was uh last week and they had a presentation that was I was, when I was hearing about it, I was going, oh, this is gonna be just what we need to hear about. What, what, from their point of view, um how do we protect the waterways with ordinances and um so they talked about that. And they showed the maps of the of the watershed and which uh municipalities were doing what, you know, for each thing that they talked about, SIO is already doing everything. So the the good news is we're 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 addressing those issues that matter. The bad news is they can't help us get further, except they have a they pointed out on their webpage, they have um a lot of good information, so I'm I'm going through that right now and they have a zoning ordinance worksheet guidance points, but as I look at it, we're doing most of them already, so it's like, we're taking care of our waterways, that's good. But I I think we could probably do better.
Kind of do more education, maybe that. And encourage people to do so, yeah.
And they have, they've hired people, they have, they they got grants, so they they have, if I can find it on the stall here, um they have staff support, staff resources, they say, to assist communities in developing ordinances or working on your uh master plan, et cetera. But I think we're beyond that, but I'll see what we can get out of it.
Yeah, if there's something that we could do to, yeah.
To help them.
Yeah, it's one of the things, it's down, it's down on our list, but it's working out to limit uh turf grass and through your zoning ordinance promote the alternative, so if there's something that they might be able to help us, you know, as we're looking at that one, that might be an option.
Sure, anytime we come up with one of those, we can ask for their input.
Okay.
They definitely have recommendations for street standards in developments to um to build smart, you know, they talk about narrowing the right of ways, John. They talked about uh.
Take on the road commission for us.
Less setbacks so that, you know, things are.
You're slowing down, you mean?
Yeah. Overly districts and zoning districts, that, you know, they're all for, but.
Okay.
Along the creeks, especially, but we already do that, we have, we have our setbacks, yeah. So, in effect, we're doing an overlay district in different words.
Um, yeah, um, is the Western Washtenaw Regional Advisory Committee, is that?
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
Um, the group met last week and I was six, so I didn't go to the meeting.
Okay, anything else that folks have? Then um public comment?
Will be helpful with that?
All right, Rob. There, he should be able to talk.
There we go, thank you. Um, I've got a suggestion, uh at last month's Land Preservation Commission uh meeting, Norm Roller uh put together a presentation about tree canopy coverage in SIO Township permeable surfaces, et cetera. I would suggest um Laura Krepp's, our planner, get together with Norm and uh that might be a more effective map showing where we've got canopy coverage near the power lines and where there's open spaces. Along those lines, as Commissioner Walsh was talking about, if we could get uh an estimate of how many watts per acre we can generate in twenty twenty four efficiencies, we could see if a twenty acre uh plot was efficient enough to be usable or does it need to be a minimum of a hundred acres or like um Mr. Yable was saying, five hundred to eight hundred acre acres for a fifty megawatt. But if we could get it broken down into watts per acre, that might help. Um, and then does Carlyle Wortman have any, is uh commis, is Planner Krepp still here?
Yes.
Yes, I'm still here.
It disappeared from screen.
Hi there, Laura, um it is Carlyle Wortman, do they have any continuing um um involvement in the Pizza Hut building um resolution?
It was my understanding that, yes, um not myself, but um Mike Razdick from our office, he is uh from the Code Enforcement Services side, the building um department side of our company. Um, he was working with the township attorneys, so I I'm not, I'm, I guess we were working on it, but I'm not familiar of of any update.
Okay, uh the last I heard was the owners were out of state and extremely hard to get a hold of, so that makes sense, okay, thank you for that. And is there an update on Maya, the Maya Restaurant on on North Zee, how are they doing?
Uh, they, as, I think that we, they finally. Uh, they, as, I, I think that we, they finally got all of their information to the state for their liquor license. Um, but I have not spoken to Leo, um, the owner, uh, since, since that liquor license went to the township board for approval. So.
Okay.
No update, sorry.
No problem, thank you very much. Uh, and then, um, in your bylaws, I would recommend that in one of the other committees, I think it's the Parks Committee, the chat is enabled so that you can chat to the Zoom host, not to everyone, but just the Zoom host. And that would prevent the chat issues that we had three years ago. But it would allow us to be able to, uh, tell the host when there's a problem. For instance, tonight, when, when Laura's there and she's running Zoom and the camera drops, which it does constantly in all committees, she fixes it instantly and it's not an issue. Um, but tonight, the only option I had was to raise my hand to try and, uh, inform you that there was a problem with the camera. Then once Laura brought up the point, the only reason I broke in was to try and, uh, speed up that resolution of it. I apologize for breaking into your, your meeting, but that was to be helpful. So, thank you, great meeting, guys. I, I appreciated your, um, conversation tonight about the solar. We, it, it, it's a big issue and there's a lot of issues associated with it, and this is a great start, well done.
Thank you.
You know, that, it must be different on a webinar because on my Zoom, I can just send it to whoever, exclude whoever.
They have to enable that and I can, um, ask them to do that, go in and update our settings so you can check. Cuz chat to the host would, I think, would be helpful. I agree, thank you. All right, it would, anyone else, uh, we don't have anyone present, is anyone else online that would like to participate in public comment? Okay, I don't see any other hands, so I'll adjourn the motion to close public comments.
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. And, um, we have our approval of minutes. Any action or corrections? Twelve eleven twenty twenty three. Moved by Commissioner Yapple.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Walsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Just minutes are approved as posted.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned and, and support. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, we are adjourned at, uh, nine thirty three. Thank you.